Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, August the 12th, 2013. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please? Councilmembers Galloway?
Here.
Lennon?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Piana?
Here.
Mayor Coulter? Here, thank you. We have a full house this evening. Our next item of business would be the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda this evening?
I move to accept the agenda as presented.
Support. Moved by Lennon, supported by Martin. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. Our next item of business would be presentations. And I noticed that our county commissioner is here. And so when she is here, I always give her an opportunity under presentations to give us any county updates if she'd like. Elaine, do you have any updates from Oakland County this evening?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Last week, I had the opportunity to go to the Catalpa Oaks Park opening, the next phase. And this is something that's very near and dear to my heart and to Mayor Coulter's, that we've worked very hard to get another South Oakland County park. And what was exciting, we now have bathrooms there. And we have a concession stand, and there's two playgrounds. And they've worked on the water retention in the field, and they've smoothed out the parking lot and increased parking. It's really a lovely park. And I know that I have a great niece and nephew, and we're always looking for new playgrounds. And I do recommend that people go and experience the playground there. You know, and there's also a walking trail. It's really lovely.
Why don't you tell them where it is?
It is on Greenfield at Catalpa, which is eleven and a half mile. And it's truly a shared community park. There's a lot, there's a baseball field, there's lots of soccer games there to go on, there's a track. So I do encourage people to take advantage of it. I also, on the park theme, did visit our nature center that we now have part of the county parks at Red Oaks, another South Oakland County area. We have worked collaboratively with the city of Madison Heights and taken over their nature center as part of the Oakland County parks. And there's this lovely little trail system, there's a nature center. And again, part of that is to make a destination place. You can go to the water park, you can go golfing, the dog park, walk across the street, and do some nature trails and so forth. And I know that some senior citizen groups, as well as camp groups, are starting to take advantage of some of these South that complex. I also wanted to tell you, we're in the process of working on budget hearings in Oakland County. I know there was a lot of press last week about three communities in the state of Michigan choosing not to go for bond money. And Oakland County is going to be going forward, selling bonds for their retirees, you know, retiree account, moving from certificates of deposit into that. We are going to be a Michigan entity going forward. And this week, there's going to be a resolution introduced about the Detroit Institute of Arts. As you all recall, a year ago, we all, we voted to support the DIA with a millage. And part of the whole process, we created an arts authority, and there were conditions of creating arts authority in that contract. One of the conditions is based on not selling art, or selling art and the revenue staying within the DIA. So Oakland County is coming forward with kind of a hardball, a resolution, talking about if you sell art from the, you know, from the Art Institute, this could be a reason to retract that millage. And, you know, this could mean $23 million a year to the DIA if all three counties did the same thing. So that's, hopefully, the art won't be touched in the bankruptcy process. That's it for tonight. Any questions for me?
As usual, thanks for coming in and keeping us informed. Our next presentation is an update on the combined storm and sanitary sewer system inspections. And our DPW director, Lloyd Jurtin, is going to update us. As you recall, this was an issue with a number of residents at our last council meeting, and we asked Lloyd to come back and tell us what he's learned since then. So Lloyd, what do we know about?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. And, you know, the crews have been out on a regular basis, daily in fact, including on the weekends, to inspect our system. We've been doing it in an urgent manner in order to, you know, discover any problem there may have been to prevent any future flooding. The, during some rain events, I've approved crews to go out and actually spot check the system during heavy rains, and also talk to some of the homeowners involved. And they experienced no problems whatsoever. The, since the last time I spoke to you, we did get one complaint of flooding. We responded immediately, went to the home, found our system working properly. The next morning, we actually paid to have a plumber come in and camera the line and found no problems whatsoever. There was water in the basement, but in this particular case, on that particular instant, it appeared to be that the basement simply was flooding from water getting into the foundation, not related to our system whatsoever. This may have been the case in some of the other instances, although without being on site at the time of the flooding, it's difficult to tell. And as you know, you know, there's a private property portion to the storm system, as well as a public portion. And thus far, we have worked from the problem area outward and covered a great deal of the city and have found no problem with our system whatsoever. So, you know, at this point, the only thing that, that we can determine that may have occurred is a overwhelming event that either was more of a rain event than our system could handle, or the private property portion of the system could handle. Most of the homes are built with a drainage system around the footings. And if those are aged and broken and aren't working properly, it could allow the water to pile up and basically seep in through the foundation. And so that's not, certainly isn't the case in every instance, but it is a possible explanation, at least, you know, one that we, in one event, they have one particular residence that was involved in initial complaints. So at this point, we're going to continue in an urgent manner, looking at our system. But we've had no additional events that, you know, that would even indicate anything with our system is wrong. But we're going to continue, as I said, our inspections.
Does anyone have any questions of Lloyd?
I have one. One of the concerns that the residents brought up was the runoff from area business roofing and then going into the system as well. Is the area in particular, outside of individual weather events, had an increase in the development that would have infected, would have affected the level of flow that the systems had to take, whether it's working or not? Could the peaks be different?
You know, it, no, it doesn't look like in that particular area that there was any, you know, increased development, or, you know, the expansion of a parking area perhaps that might cause additional runoff. And so, you know, at this time, it really appears to probably be just a combination of factors, you know, maybe the individual homes, maybe the drainage system around the drainage tile around the footings, or that it was so much rain in such a short period of time that it just overwhelmed their individual system or combination.
Thank you. I mean, so, I mean, there is such a thing as a 50-year storm or something like that, occasionally a severe enough period. And so at this point, I mean, that's a...
Four, four, yeah. An act of God doesn't happen four times.
Can we have a brand-new system in our home that's not a matter of old infrastructure?
We've spent several thousands of dollars, between $15,000 replacing our drainage tiles and our sewer system.
And we're talking about a minimum of $10,000 or $20,000?
Is there someone that wants, I mean, if someone wants to come up and, yep, represent the group, that would be fine, let's...
I appreciate everything DPW is doing. I think they're doing a great job. But the fact of the matter is, it happened four times. So it's not a 50-year flood unless we're having four of them in a two-week period.
Right.
And the other thing is, we haven't had rains as strong as we had during that two-week period. That's why we haven't had more flooding. But it's going to happen again. It happened four times already. And I think it's fantastic that DPW actually brought out those plumbers to check the lines. But what that really proved is, it's not a problem with the infrastructure of these homes. We have brand-new systems. The problem is the larger city infrastructure.
And I want to thank you for coming out. Actually, I found that the source of the leak had nothing to do with the foundation that was internally inside of the house. That was actually from a freezer line. Had nothing to do with the drain tile. My concern is, I went home today, my house still smells like sewage. I got a $2,500 bill to clean this up. And, I mean, we're talking about a lot of money here, and my concern is, is I want to restore my home, restore my basement. I need to know, you know, that this isn't going to happen again. But the idea, again, that this was a one-off 50-year flood when it happened four times, I lived here 13 years, I've never had so much as one drop of water come in from the city sewer system. The neighbors behind us actually lived there 23 years, they never had a flood, and they had a flood four times.
And just as a reminder, our brand-new system has four backwater valves installed in various areas. I mean, this is, there's nothing else that we could have done to prevent this from arming. And these are the eight homes that back up to the Ford dealership.
Yes. Because I know my problem is not a foundation problem. I spent over $10,000 having my basement waterproofed. The water is coming up through the drains and the toilet in the basement. So it's not a structural issue.
So Lloyd, at this point, I mean, literally, what are our options for these folks? Because I certainly do feel for you, and I know when you spend that kind of money, you don't want it to happen again.
Well, we're not gonna, we're not gonna, as I said, we're going to continue with a sense of urgency, but we're well beyond the affected area at this point, as far as our inspections. We literally have gone from, from structure to structure, jetting the lines, looking for problems, coming out in rain events, pulling the covers, you know, at all times, weekend, nights, and we are not seeing any backup. So the system is draining. If there was a flood, we'd know it. We'd get calls. And the thing is, is that, as I explained before, the way that a sewer would, would back up, if it isn't just an overwhelming event, would be that there'd be a plug downstream and the water begins to back up. And what you're, what you're seeing is isolated complaints, not necessarily...
I'm sorry to interrupt, Lloyd. But to ask this question, as one engineer to another, if you can't find anything wrong in a system, then wouldn't you suspect the next thing is the system is overwhelmed by the water that's happening? And I think that's a question I have when I size this design.
That's actually what I've been saying. You know, that, you know, there's potential that it was a single, or not single, but perhaps multiple overwhelming events during a series of storms that overwhelmed the system, not just the city system, though it could possibly be the drainage system around the house. And as I explained in our previous meeting, many of the homes in Ferndale are designed where the foundation drainage system actually ties into the sanitary system as well. So when people observe water coming up out of their floor drain, or even out of their toilet, it in fact could be caused by, you know, water backing up in their individual drainage system. I'm not saying definitively that that's the case. I'm just trying to answer all questions and provide whatever information I can. But in our case, you know, we're limited to what's going on in the public right of way and what is the city's, what the city owns. And in this case, I mean, it would be much easier for me if I found something in the system.
Of course.
I'd much prefer, you know, issuing the crews out to come out and make repair. And I, and I think of, anybody who's called with DPW, I think we've shown that, you know, we're willing to give whatever expertise or whatever effort we, we have to try to correct the problem. But if we cannot identify a problem, and it certainly doesn't seem to me that a system that's been in place for, you know, decades, suddenly would have, would have a problem based on, you know, development issues, roof runoff and that kind of thing, unless it's something new. And thus far, we haven't found anything like that.
Other comments of council?
Well, yeah, can you clarify again what the options were going forward?
Going forward, we're going to continue to expand our inspection crew to look at greater portions of the system. I don't think that's going to be fruitful. It's less likely, as we get beyond the affected area, that we're going to find something in the system that would cause a problem. The, we've already, we've already been out, flushed, maintained a large portion of the system, looked at it, inspected it. The only thing left to do, which would be at a considerable expense, was to actually pay a company to come in and devise the main lines, you know, in, in several areas in the affected area. It's considerable expense, probably looking at several thousand dollars. And frankly, with the system flowing, you know, we can walk out there at any time during a rain event, which we've, we've done with some of the homeowners, and pull a cover, and you can look and see that the water is flowing. And so as long as that system is, is flowing, and it's not obstructing in any way...
It's flowing into our basements.
Let me ask one question. Lloyd, is there any possibility that new development, excuse me, at Eight Mile and Woodward had, has something to do with it?
Not likely.
Not likely.
Not likely. And when we were out doing, we found, we found problems in the system, it's with other, in other areas of the city. It's, it's normal stuff. You know, a contractor's working somewhere on Eight Mile and dumps concrete into the catch basin. That's going to affect that immediate area, perhaps even just that catch basin, but it's not going to affect the drainage system overall. It's just going to affect that one immediate spot. And so we found a couple of things like that, and structures that may need to be rebuilt because the bricks are loose in them and, and that kind of thing. But it's not, not anything that would cause water to back up, you know, into, into somebody's home.
Lloyd, when was the last time that affected area was worked on? I mean, we've gone through, 60% of our sewer lines have been replaced, I think you reported last time. When was the last time the affected area was worked on, or relined, or whatever?
Well, Jewel Street in particular, I spoke to the engineer by phone a couple of weeks ago. He's researching the records because, as you know, they've got, you know, we don't replace all the system all at once. So it's a matter of identifying if there is a problem in a problem area, and the ones that are the most deteriorated, you replace first. So I'll be happy to provide that information to council, or if anybody wants to call in the DPW, I'd be happy to provide that information. Have separate meetings with anyone who, you know, wants, wants to look at the records. I'm more than happy to show that. I don't have exactly when that area, Jewel Street, was, was lying, but I can get that information.
Well, maybe, oh, I'm sorry, I said...
Have there, you know, have there been any changes to the, has there been any construction in that area, along Woodward Avenue, along the commercial zone sites that were...
There is a lot of redevelopment that goes on on a regular basis. But the things that you'd be looking for are items that would, you know, change, as I was saying, expansion of a parking lot, would change a footprint of the building, because then that would, would change what their stormwater runoff might be. But, you know, and I don't typically look at those plans when they come through. So, but I can say from, from my observation, I have not, I've been out in the field quite a bit, walking up and down the streets and, and making my inspections as well with the crew. And, you know, I don't see that as a significant change that would cause this kind of a problem.
I mean, the only thing I can think of on that end that has changed dramatically over the last 15 years is going from gauge olds to, you know, the GMC view of facade. I don't know if the parking lot got substantially bigger, or, you know, how that was handled. But that's the only change that's been down there, right? I mean, Ed Schmidt hasn't changed in, you know, since they opened.
Well, it seems like there's quite a bit of people affected by this. And you said it's several thousand dollars to have a company come out?
Yes.
It is?
TV, yeah.
Really?
The TV main.
Well, I mean, this just might be, have to be an option, we might have to explore.
What I hear you saying, Lloyd, is, you haven't looked inside the mains, but you've looked at sort of things that can give you an indication what's going on in the main, and there's no reason to believe that the main is clogged up or anything?
Yeah, it's not. I mean, you, you can see the water flowing, you know, when you pop a manhole cover and you, and you look upstream, downstream, you can see, you know, the water flow. And that's typically what the guys will do in order to try to spot if there is a blockage. As I explained at the last council meeting, you know, if, you know, if there's a blockage, the water will begin to back up into not just the sewer main, but eventually it will back up into the manhole structures begin to rise. And as it rises, it also will rise into the individual lines to the homes. That hasn't been the case, you know. And so in order to make sure that, you know, we're getting the, the largest amount of flow possible through those mains, you know, we will flush them. And especially if we're getting calls for flooding, you know, even with, the crews are already dispatched, they, they already arrive on scene with the equipment, so they're going to automatically jet whatever, you know, stick the jet down into the sewer main and begin to flush the system in the event that there is something there that's obstructing. But, you know, I'm, I'm speaking to the crews at a minimum on a daily basis, and, you know, and we're going through the system, looking at how it's designed, how the sewer system normally would flow the direction, flushing multiple lines, in some cases, multiple times. And, you know, and it's been a couple of weeks, we haven't had the types of rains that we had when we got the initial complaints. We've had some rain and some hard rains. And we haven't seen any kind of a backup whatsoever. In fact, even during the, the initial calls that we got for flooding, we did not see, you know, any kind of backup. You know, the, the system was running very strong, it was at, at high capacity. So, you know, without a question, some of the rain, the rain runoff is, is attributed to water that just comes, you know, when the ground gets saturated around a home, you know, that, that's going to have to get into the house, into the, into the drainage tiles and then drain out through our system. And so there's always a, a potential that a, a rain event may be so strong for a given period of time that it overwhelms the system either privately or publicly.
Lloyd, just one more question for me. If we decided tonight that the system was just inadequate in that section of the city, and we decided tonight to tear out the sewers and replace it with a higher-capacity system, how long would that take? I would assume it's a couple of years.
Probably not a couple of years, but a year, probably.
I mean, to get it engineered and to negotiate the contracts and find a funding source and all that type of stuff, it's not going to be weeks or months. So the gentleman who's sitting right behind you wanted to know when he could start cleaning up his house. And we're not going to have an end-all, be-all solution if that, in fact, is what we need to do for at least several months, a year.
And, you know, in my mind, you know, it comes back to, comes back to being able to identify a problem. You know, I don't think there's any question that council, city management, or DPW would correct the problem if we discovered one, you know. And the system has been in place decades. We had some, at least some, two events. Because, you know, as far as the records that we keep at the DPW, somebody may experience a flood in their home, but if they don't notify us, we don't know about it. We had two, I don't have the dates with me tonight, but there were, there was a Monday and a Thursday prior to the last council meeting, that we had some very strong rains, and we had got some calls. We immediately dispatched our water and sewer superintendent, as well as some of our water and sewer crews, and they didn't find anything. That doesn't mean that the, I'm not denying that the homeowners may have had some flood problems, I'm sure they did. But the problem is, is identifying what the concern is and whether or not we can correct it. And as of right now, we haven't found any problems. If, if we found a glass main, if we found, you know, a plug, if we, I'd report that to you and, and let you know. Thus far, we have spent quite a bit of time and energy and are more than willing to assist the homeowners in any way possible, but it has, we have not identified anything that in our system that may have caused the problem.
Do you want to speak again? I know I...
And I don't want to get over my head.
That's okay.
But I was, was lost my attention, and I guess they're doing some digging on East Webster, which is another street that experienced flooding at the same time that we did. And I don't know if that's related. I'd be curious to know what kind of work they're doing on Webster and, and if it's for that same problem with the flood.
Do you know what's going on on East Webster, Lloyd?
Yeah, I spoke to our leader in sewer today. When they're out doing these routine inspections that I was just mentioning, they did find that one of the catch basins is deteriorating, needs to be rebuilt. Those are not things that would cause the kind of problems that we're talking about. Those are just some infrastructure that's deteriorating, needs to be repaired. And as they come across it, they're making repairs. And these things, obviously, when we are doing as much as work out there in that area as we are and being as meticulous as we are, we're finding some things and correcting them.
So not a satisfactory answer. I know you're frustrated, and for good reason. I think you could probably sense Lloyd is frustrated, and we are too, because I don't know exactly what the solution is tonight, other than to continue to investigate, to expand the investigation, and to have you contact us if another incident occurs. I know that is not a wholly satisfying answer, but, did you, I'm sorry, did you want to...
Just, I really appreciate the question that you asked about how long would it take if we were to address the capacity issue?
Yeah.
But I guess from our point of view, if it takes a year, that's once we start it takes a year. So the longer we continue this, that's just pushing that year even further in the future. So I hope that's something that we can look into, because we believe it is a capacity problem, and that's why there are no obstructions, because DPW's found no obstructions, we don't believe there are any obstructions, we believe it's a capacity issue. And a lot of communities similar to Ferndale are moving from a separated storm and sanitary sewer for this exact reason, because it's an outdated system. It's not how they're building communities now, because it's, it's, it's an outdated way of building them, and it's not ideal. I don't know if separating the systems is the better idea or increasing capacity, but it takes a long time to do, and that's why we would like to move forward as soon as possible with something.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
No, thank you. I really appreciate you coming out again tonight. Your frustration is well understood. All right, any other questions or comments on this item? The next item of business would be call the audience. Call the audience is 30 minutes now and more time if needed at the end of the meeting to talk about anything that's not on the agenda. So if there's something on the agenda that is of interest to you tonight, you will have an opportunity to speak to that item when we get to that portion of the agenda. So just please understand that. So this, this portion of the agenda is for anything that's not on the agenda. It's three minutes for you. We don't respond, we just listen to you for three minutes, up to three minutes, and tell us whatever's on your mind this evening. Sherry?
All right. I am Sherry A. Wells, and I have lived at 315 West Troy for 25 years. I will be on the ballot in November for mayor. I apply to you voters for the position of mayor, which opens up every two years. My record of education, work, and volunteer experience suits me well to be your mayor for our town. I personally got all 120 signatures on my nominating petition for mayor, getting some in each precinct, 42% from Eastside residents. One reporter called me an attorney and volunteer. A local businessman introduced me to his wife as a community activist. I am self-employed, which also gave me the flexibility to initiate and pull off Family Fundale downtown this past April to highlight shops open to families. I've been a member of the Ferndale Area Chamber and attended many bivouac cuttings for local businesses. Your mayor should be the face of Ferndale, and I will do... Your mayor should be the face of Ferndale, and I will do that for you. I am a frequent and hard worker at events for children, for seniors, and in between. I've been volunteering at the phone bank at affirmations last year and this summer to encourage voters in Jackson and Royal Oak to expand the civil rights we voted for here in Ferndale to GLBT and to other persons. The mayor presides over city council meetings. I presided for two years over the Ferndale City Charter Revision Commission. Then I went home each of those evenings and summarized our actions to save the city from paying our Flint legal consultant to drive down to attend all of our meetings. During the last four years, you've seen me at all but two city council meetings. The mayor is automatically a member of the Board of the DDA, the Downtown Development Authority. I'm not on that board, yet I attended all of its regular meetings without fail also the last four years. In the past two years, I attended Ferndale and Hazel Park School meetings, a Hazel Park City Council meeting, and a meeting of nearly every board and commission that Ferndale has. In 1996, two of us researched requirements for every board and commission made it public. More residents applied for open spots by the following January than ever did before or since. We typically have an attorney on our city council. We've had Phil Poole, Chuck Gettler, currently Scott Galloway, who's not running for reelection, so thereto, I will be an asset on your city council. I would not be the first woman mayor. Unfortunately, the only one we've had so far, Pamela McCullough, back in the 90s, recently passed away, far too young. My Facebook page for the candidacy will be up this week. In the meantime, if you have any questions or issues you want me to know or to learn about, please call at 248-543-5297, or email to sherwells@tm.net. That's TM as in the mayor dot net. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address council this evening? Jeanne Davis.
Jeanne Davis. And along those same lines, the seniors, Ferndale senior group traditionally has a meet the candidate afternoon, and we're doing it this year on August 28th, and all the candidates are invited. I know you're coming, Mr. Mayor, and-
Melanie.
Councilman Piana's coming, as well as Greg Pollica. So, it is August 28th, 11:00 a.m. at the Kulik Community Center. There's no charge, and you don't have to be a senior. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello, everyone. I'm Judy Palmer, and I'm the chairperson for the Ferndale Community Foundation, and we are having a huge event come October. It's called the Taste of Ferndale. We're inviting a lot of the local restaurants to participate and give us all a taste of their delicious food. Along with that, we're going to have a silent auction, we're going to have music, and it's a great atmosphere for everybody to intermingle and stuff. It's October 23rd, and it'll be held at Loving Touch, and that is a Wednesday.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you. Good evening.
Evening. Hi, council. I'm Dave Cotrell of 1610 Bowfield, representing the Sierra Club Green Cruise, which is this last Saturday. It was great fun, the weather was perfect, location was great, at East Nine Mile and Woodward. People loved the rise of Birmingham into Belle Isle. The parade went through the east side where people watched from their porches as the earth wall walkers, vices, drummers, and four-wheeled bike contraptions went past their homes. Shinola Bicycle Manufacturing Detroit displayed their exquisite bicycles and let interested people test them out. Our Ferndale sponsors were Garden Fresh Gourmet, Western Market, that provided the bicycle corral, Woodward Imperial, Dino's, the WAB, Como's, that provided the electricity for the van, New York Bagel, Downtown Bicycle Shop, Credit Union One. We thank the city of Ferndale, auxiliary police, DPW, volunteers, attendees, and sponsors of the Green Cruise. So, thank you for everybody for the Green Cruise.
Great job, David, it's a wonderful event. Thanks.
Hi, good evening, mayor and council and staff. One of the things that people love about Ferndale is the ability to ride your bikes, the walkability, the bike riding. Over the years, we've installed bike lanes, we have lots and lots of bike racks, always installing more. There is a problem that appears to be getting worse, though, and that is the theft of bicycles. In June, I had my third bicycle stolen in about several years, and yes, I had a $40 steel inch-thick hardened lock, was stolen right outside the Cupcake Factory in downtown Ferndale. The first two bikes that I had stolen, I did report to the police, then I did not report this last one. I wasn't going to really bring this up, except I just heard that last week Jay McMillan, who's the president of our Ferndale Chamber of Commerce, had his bicycle stolen right outside of Snap Fitness, and this was in daylight, he actually saw the theft happening, and, but by the time he got out there to try to catch his bike or stop it, they were already gone. So, I just, I guess, want to share that at least it appears there might be an increase, but even if there's not a rash of new thefts, I think there's too many going on, and I guess I would just encourage residents, if you see anything suspicious, you see somebody with a bolt cutters, or kids that look like they maybe they're with bikes that don't belong to them, please keep your eyes open, don't be afraid to call the police, and maybe we could even ask the police if they'd be willing to set up some other sting operations again, so that we could try to stop some of the thefts going on. Thanks kindly. Oh, and Jeanne, I'll be at your meeting for the seniors, too.
Good evening, Chris.
Good evening. Chris Hughes, communications marketing manager for the Ferndale DDA. You all look snappy in those bright green shirts, we won't miss you out there.
That's for sure.
It's good, that's a compliment, I'm not, I came up here to say that we're, I'm not campaigning for anything except for art. We have begun the Art Town voting procedure, and Art Town, as you may or may not remember, is an 11-piece sculpture exhibit, a temporary installation around town. We will be purchasing two of those pieces. Those final two will be decided out of a group of five that are going to be narrowed down by a public vote, and there are three ways that you can vote for art in the Art Town exhibit. One is by ballot at the DDA office, a paper ballot will give you one, you can pick your favorite, write down your favorite. The other is on, in cans that have, that picture a particular sculpture, so we're encouraging you to drop a dollar, or two, or a thousand into those, your favorite one, and all that money that we use will be used, it will go toward the tally, but that money will also be used to purchase this final piece of public art. So, we're in a fundraising mode as well. And finally, you can vote on Facebook, Downtown Ferndale, you'll see a picture, pictures of all the sculptures, just go there and like the one that you like the best, and I will tell you right now, there is a hot contest going on, so, and I'm not going to tell you who it's with, you'll figure it out yourself, but if you have a favorite, make sure you get out there and vote, just like anything, your vote counts. Another thing that I want to remind everybody about, that we're going to start the Dream Cruise this weekend on Thursday night with our outdoor movie series, Get Real, on Vester Street, we will be showing Grease, of course. It's sponsored by Ferndale Collision, Dino's, and Valentine Vodka. It'll also be accompanied musically by the Detroit Actors Theater Guild, who bring a special something to the whole performance, so we're inviting everybody to come on down, park your chair on Vester anytime after 4:00 o'clock, go out and shop, dine, enjoy the Dream Cruise activities, and then come back at 8:00 o'clock and enjoy the festivities of watching Sandy and whatever his name is doing all that stuff. Another update I'd like to give you, and I'm trying to be snappy here, but How the West Was Won, our streetscape project, is moving along just great, we headed south. Just a little update on that, we have sent out 45 text alerts and 17 email newsletters, Pony Expresses, sharing the good, the bad, and sometimes the very ugly about the project. We're very excited with the construction going to the south side, because that means that we are more than halfway done, rather than just having started. So, in the next week, this DDA staff will be visiting West Nine businesses with a survey to find out what else we can be doing to help them. We'll be printing out a Pony Express, a hard copy, that'll look something like this, so that the businesses can post it for their customers to see what is going to be happening in the week again. We want to remind everybody that although we are, some of the barrels are being moved around and repositioned, that no matter what, West Nine Mile is a construction workzone, so please drive safely and also continue to shop those businesses, and we're very happy that the project is going pretty much on time, and that works out really good. And one more thing is that on Monday, a week from tonight, everyone in the world is invited to come and meet the Board of the DDA. We have our annual Meet the Board meeting, it's at, from 6:00 to 7:30 at Rosie O'Grady's. Come out and see who's, some of the decision-makers behind all this, and express your opinion on what things are happening in downtown Ferndale, what you'd like to see differently, and whatever else you'd like to say. So, that's it, thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Whew, deep breath after all of that. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Andrew Robert Sissel, and I just wanted to announce that I'm holding a political rally, October 6th, at Gary Park, at 6:00 p.m. I already got the permit, I paid the permit fee, filed it, so it's going to happen, so I just wanted to let everybody know, basically, this rally is to bring political awareness. You know, I want to bring all types of groups of people together, obviously, I'm younger myself, so I want to bring a younger crowd, but I really just want the whole community as a whole to come together, so, October 6th at 6:00 p.m. at Gary Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Michael Larry.
And thank you for wearing your shirts. This Thursday, Friday, and Saturday is the 19th Annual Woodward Dream Cruise. This is where the dream began in 1995, because of a visionary man named Nelson House, who wanted to raise money for a soccer field. That soccer field exists today because of him and his vision. The one thing that was asked to me, of me earlier today, was what I thought about the Woodward Dream Cruise personally. And the thing that hit me the most is realizing that his vision created more than just the Woodward Dream Cruise. You've got several cruises throughout the summer that were inspired because of one man's vision. So, it takes sometimes one person's vision to create so much more to make a difference. So, I hope that people realize that it's not just about the Woodward Dream Cruise. You can look at so many different things in our life that are inspired by one, that inspires the many. So, take that message and realize that there are positive things in everything we do, if we want to make them positive. On that note, I just want to be able to tell you that on Friday, we have the Emergency Vehicle Show, the 13th Annual Emergency Vehicle Show. This is inspired by our local police department and some of the pride that comes out of that department. So, we're proud to be able to say that we have that event again. At 5:00 o'clock, we have the official ribbon cutting ceremony, which our honorable mayor will be emceeing, and then immediately after that, we have the lights and sirens cruise. That event, to me, if you see a 70-year-old man standing there, his eyes show that he's 12 again, because that's what that event does. It inspires people once again to remember what it was like to be a kid. People with these beautiful classic cars, who take pride in restoring them, keeping them roaring, it's like talking about their first child. They're proud of it, and we cannot do anything else but get excited for their passion that they shared with us. On Saturday, we have the 15th Annual Mustang Alley. We have nearly 800 Mustangs now that attend this event. It's exciting. And on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, we have our Rockin' Live Entertainment, we have the Kids Play Zone, and we have merchant vendors and a food court for just fun and exciting, so that when that car enthusiast is bringing his family with them, they may be there for 15 minutes and start getting bored. Well, guess what? Those little kids who need something else to do to burn off that energy, they've got all those inflatable rides to just enjoy. So, I just want to say that Ferndale's focused on something, and that is how to make it fun, how to make it exciting beyond just one part, and that is that you make it fun for the family, you make it fun for the car enthusiasts, and you make it fun for the historical component. So, I want to encourage everybody to think about the fun that comes with this and the history that we should be proud of as Ferndaleans, because this is where the dream began in 1995. We are proud to be able to say that it's a 19th annual celebration, and if you want any more information, just go on the website at ferndaldreamcruise.com. And I want to sincerely thank you, the council, for being supportive in everything that you do to help make this happen, and most importantly, even more so, is our funding is made possible by Ford Motor Company. Thank you.
Don't forget the sponsor. But it's nice, after all these years of working on it, Michael, you're still very enthusiastic and passionate about it, it shows, and thanks for all your work on that event. Anyone else like to address council this evening? Mayor Jack Lloyd of the great sister city of Hazel Park. Mayor Lloyd, how are you tonight?
Good, thank you. Good evening, mayor, council, city administration, Hazel Park. Good news. Recently, I had the pleasure of attending another outstanding Ferndale event, and that being the Ferndale Pub Call. That was an outstanding event, well organized, safe, and the group leader stayed with the groups and moved the event right along in a timely manner. Everyone had a great time, I was in my group, and had a great time there, raised some money, and I just want to say thank you, it was outstanding event, and Ferndale, every time we walked, people were well organized and putting their trash right in the trash barrels, so they weren't throwing it on the ground, so it was all the logistics as it was when it started. So, I just want to let you know that, I know you know, but Ferndale's a nice, safe city to come to, and all the events are well organized, and I had a great time. Thank you.
And you in particular are always welcome, mayor. Nice to see you. Thank you. Anyone else like to address council this evening? All right, we'll close, call the audience, and we'll move on to the next item of business would be the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items are items that council considers routine, and we enact in one motion, unless someone from council would like to remove something from the consent agenda. First, let me read it. Item A is the approval of a minute for the regular meeting held July 22nd, 2013, and the special meeting held July 29th, 2013. Item B is the approval of repair invoice from WW Williams for $5,291.09 for repairs on engine 11-1 to be charged to the motor pool fund. Item C is the approval of a contract with OLSA for CDBG chore services programs for the year 2013. Item D is, excuse me, is the approval of the parking agreement with Zoma Investment LLC, otherwise known as Ferndale Collision, at 180 Vester, and authorization for the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement. Item E is the approval of the purchase agreement with Chris George for 1456 Browning, and authorization for the city clerk and mayor to execute said agreement. Item F is the approval of a retirement and transition agreement submitted by the city manager, and item G is the approval of the bills and payroll, as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to the review by the council finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
I'd move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Piana. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak to the consent agenda this evening? Is there anyone from council that would like to speak to the consent agenda this evening? Otherwise, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Galloway.
Yes.
London is absent, Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you, the consent agenda is adopted. Moving on to the regular agenda. Unless there's an objection of council, would, I would like to move item C to item A, just because I'm guessing that there may be some folks in the audience that want to speak to this item, and I don't think you have to wait until the very end if you don't want to, so if I don't hear any objections, maybe just for the convenience of our, of our audience, we'll move to item C on the regular agenda, which is the consideration of an ordinance initiative petition to decriminalize marijuana in Ferndale. I'm going to have our city clerk introduce this item, if you would. Sherilyn.
Okay. On July 30th, 2013, obviously, Andrew Sissel filed petitions requesting council to adopt an ordinance to add Section 12-82 to the Ferndale Code of Ordinances, Chapter 12-
Good.
Article 3, that would read, "None of the provisions of Sections 12-72 through 12-81 shall apply to the use, possession, or transfer of less than one ounce of marijuana on private property by a person who has attained the age of 21 years." Pursuant to charter requirements and the state of Michigan election law, we examined the petitions, they meet those requirements, they meet the timing requirement of our charter, and the petitions contain the requisite number of valid registered voter signatures, so those petitions were certified later that same day. Again, pursuant to the procedure set forth in our city charter, council has 20 days to adopt the proposed ordinance without alteration, or the ordinance shall be submitted to a vote of the qualified electors at the November 5th election.
Thank you, Sherilyn.
You are so welcome.
So, as I said, this is an opportunity- So, as I said, this is an opportunity before council does its deliberations for anyone in the audience to speak to this issue. We, we conduct this just like we do call the audience, which is three minutes for you to say whatever you like. We don't debate, so unless you have a specific logistical question, this is your opportunity, three minutes, to speak on this issue, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this issue this evening. Good evening, sir. Please state your name and your address for the.
My name is Ryan Murray, and I'm at 1396 Spencer. I've got some little informational fingers I printed out in case anybody wants to take orders. I don't know how to get those up to you, but.
Thank you, yes.
Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, Mr. Mayor, it's good to be here in front of you tonight. When I think of Ferndale, there are many words that come to mind, fun, friendly, and fabulous, of course, but there's another word that doesn't start with F. Ferndale's progressive. We're tolerant while other places struggle with acceptance. We've never been afraid to make a statement even when it wasn't changing things in the short term, on human rights, on gay marriage, on anti-discrimination. We've always been at the forefront of standing up for what we believe in, and because of how close you as city council are to your electorate, there's rarely a need to put something up for a popular vote when it's been the right thing to do. Tonight, you've got the opportunity to land on the right side of history before many other places catch on. Insanity is doing the same thing over and over again but expecting different results. Not actually Einstein, but somebody else said that, Rita Mae Brown in a book, Sudden Death. It's ironic, she was actually paraphrasing something that was written a few years earlier by Narcotics Anonymous admission form. So, just as an addict needs to come to terms with their addiction before the disease can improve, so do we after 40 years of failed drug policy. It's about time that we acknowledge that the war on drugs is something that our society has become addicted to. Just as organized crime is addicted to their billions of dollars of drug revenue that prohibition has gifted them with, so too are the police forces kept flush with anti-drug dollars and forfeiture proceeds. So too are the prisons which fill the brim with ruined lies. So too are the lawyers and judges and politicians who make so much hay about being tough on crime, as long as that means throwing the most marginalized and defenseless members of our society in prison for having a baggy bill. If I'm rambling, pardon me, I'm a little nervous.
That's okay, but you're closed, your three minutes.
Okay. Satirist Will Rogers said, "We don't seem to be able to check crime, so why not legalize it and then tax the hell out of it?" Well, slightly out of paraphrase there. It certainly worked for studying the tide of crime and violence in the wake of alcohol's prohibition. That we managed to repeat the same mistake near decades after that experiment failed doesn't shock me as much as the difficulty in getting people to care that we still haven't learned that lesson. Decriminalizing marijuana is but a small step towards ending the war on drugs, but it's a necessary one, and one that should be made without haste. You have the power right now to move us forward as a city and send a message that we are not wearing blinders to the complete failure of national drug policy and will not keep beating this dead horse. Please pass this resolution with due haste. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Good evening.
Good evening. Carly Podzickowski, I'm at 846 Allen.
And speak up just a little bit.
I'm sorry. 846 Allen, I am also the director for Southeast Oakland Coalition. I gave you guys packets earlier to discuss. I've also included some handouts at the back this evening. I would like to take an opposite stance on this, obviously. I think that there should be a little more time and effort into this. I think it should go to voters at this point. I'm not activating for prohibition by any means, but I just think there should be a more thoughtful action to how we see how the ordinance goes. As a community, for children, as far as perception of risk goes, when perception of risk goes down, if this ordinance should be adopted, use always goes up, as speaking from a prevention standpoint with drugs and alcohol. The other thing that I would like to see more attention be brought to is the vagueness of the private property. It doesn't really speak to whether it's my property or your property, and what will happen between point A and point B, should there be any drugged driving. That's, that would be a big concern of mine, not to mention the fact that it is in conflict with state and federal law. I have left flyers at the back of the room for, and October 10th, let's see, Open Intermediate School District is having the truth and consequences of marijuana in youth, that I would appreciate it if people would just take the time to educate themselves more on the effects of youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to address this issue? Andrew?
Good evening. First off, I just want to say, in order to change laws at the federal level, because the federal law always trumps everything, you start at the bottom and you work your way up. So, we changed laws here at the municipal level, and then we can go on to change them at the state level and work our way up. Nobody's gonna change federal law, because that government's just too powerful. So, we start here. Ferndale being a progressive community, I don't see where else to do this at, and the whole state's gonna be watching. So, this is definitely a good thing, in my opinion. The other thing is, I agree with her. I do think that this law is a little too vague, the way it's written, if you guys have looked at it. I would like to help out in maybe, you know, tightening the law up. You know, I'm a community person. I'm involved with the industry, so I'm kinda having in with knowing what's going on exactly. So, I think I'd be a very good person to help out with tightening this law, because even if you don't pass it now, it's gonna go to the ballot. It will pass on the ballot, I guarantee it. And the thing is, the law is too loose. The state law, the medical laws are too loose, and now the city ordinance is also too loose. It, it does need to be tightened up. There needs to be some parameters, talking about private property and the word transfer, stuff like that, needs to be addressed more. And like I said, I would definitely like to help out if that's a possibility, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Michael McShane. I'm a local resident of Ferndale. I am for decriminalizing marijuana here in Ferndale or anywhere else. I, I believe Ferndale's a very, Ferndale's a very progressive area and community, that's why I'm here. And I'd like to go back before we go forward, just for a minute, and talk about, you know, why marijuana is illegal, and it, and it really goes back to 1937. And I don't think we're doing anything like we did in 1937, especially in Ferndale, but it was really brought to us by the timber and paper industry as a restriction, as, as to remove hemp from the business of paper and timber. And it originally started as a tax act, which meant if you could get a tax stamp to grow marijuana or have it, you could do it, but those, those tax stamps never were issued. So, it was really a sham, and it was, you know, absolutely fraudulent in its delivery to the American Congress at the time. I think as a political culture here, we support transparency in government, as well as personal and individual freedoms. I believe marijuana represents civil liberties, and I believe it should be decriminalized and actually legalized. I also believe marijuana to be very safe. There's compelling evidence supporting its safety. States that have developed medical marijuana laws have seen a 9% reduction in roadside fatalities in car accidents, because people aren't drinking as much. There's cases in Oakland County that law enforcement are tracking teen drinking versus smoking. Kids are getting smarter, they're smoking more, which I think is a good thing, versus drinking. In my personal case, and I've got three minutes, but I'd like to tell you that I've controlled cancer with marijuana. I've avoided surgery and radiation therapy, as well as chemotherapy with marijuana oil, and I believe it saved my life. I believe it's much safer than the, the doctors have us taking these type of treatments. And in regards to the feds and the marijuana law, Eric Holder today came out and said that the US justice system is broken and needs sweeping changes in regards to these type of questions, in regards to decriminalizing nonviolent marijuana laws. And that's what you have an opportunity to do here in Ferndale, and I urge you to do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming. Good evening.
Hi. I'm Michael Buguard. I live at 551 Spencer Street. I've been diagnosed with Crohn's disease for nearly 15 years, and I would say about 10 years ago, marijuana saved my life. It's the only way I would keep food down. Just drinking water made me puke. My weight got down to about 15 pounds less than I am now, and as you can see, I'm not exactly a heavyweight here. I think it's absurd that we're having this debate at all. It's time to legalize, not just for medicinal purposes, but for recreational use. This is a free country based on libertarian values, and I think it's ridiculous that we're not able to do what we want in the privacy of our own homes. We're allowed to get drunk in public, as long as we don't make too much of a nuisance, but yet a quiet stoner is going to go to jail? I mean, this is silly. I mean, come on. Let's make a change on this. And also, I saw on the news that our chief of police has said that he is going to disregard this law if this comes into effect in the city, and I think if that's the case, we need to have him removed from office, in the fact that he does not reckon, recognize the will of the people that are paying his check. Thank you very much.
Carrie Myers, good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Coulter, members of council, staff, I have some materials that I'd like council Well, there's never been an occasion in my 14 years as superintendent of Ferndale Schools that I felt the need to address matters being deliberated by council. But I'm here tonight to respectfully ask you to vote no on the proposed ordinance. I'm here really to ask you to deny approval of the ordinance in behalf of the young people under the age of 21 who reside here and attend school in our community. This proposal to legalize marijuana possession within the city of Ferndale poses a potential negative threat to the children and families we serve in the Ferndale Public Schools. My concern is that by de facto approving of marijuana use in our community, we could indirectly negatively impact our students. As background, since 2002, the Ferndale Schools have participated in a National Institutes of Health Study under the auspices of the University of Michigan. The study, the National Monitor in the Future Survey, has collected data on risky behaviors and drug and alcohol use by students in our schools. What we've learned over the years has been encouraging. For example, our students demonstrate a lower incidence of using street drugs, including marijuana and alcohol, than students nationwide. They are using these substances significantly less than students in neighboring school districts as well. We want that trend to continue. Furthermore, the district is fiduciary of a federal drug-free communities grant managed by the Southeast Oakland Coalition. Included with the materials that you have are copies of various documents produced by the Alliance of Coalitions for Healthy Communities, which document, among other things, that marijuana can be a gateway to dangerous street drugs. So, as superintendent of Ferndale Schools, I ask you to vote no on the ordinance. Allow the voters to decide. Our students and our school community cannot afford to have their access to drugs potentially increased, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff.
I like the tie.
Well, thank you.
A Fern tie. I've never seen.
Printed in Detroit. My name is Jim O'Donnell. I'm president of the Ferndale School Board, and I'm a Ferndale resident at 1326 West Hazelhurst, Hazelhurst Street. I come tonight to speak also to the ordinance, not on behalf of the school board, because we haven't discussed this particular ordinance as a body. But in my individual president, role as, as president and as a member of the board, I speak respectfully asking you to vote no, because, for one, the school district has a strong drug prevention policy already, which, which work, which works with, has worked with the police department, with state and federal law. We have established 1,000-foot drug-free school zones cooperatively. Also, just amplifying what Superintendent Myers said, the National Institutes of Drug Abuse Research has shown that an important factor in reducing drug use among young people is the community attitudes towards alcohol and other drugs. And that's research, research-based. Another important factor is drug use in the home. So, even though this ordinance would only apply to people that are 21 years and older, it's important to know that that, that increased drug use in, in private homes would elevate the risk of our youth in terms of, of drug use. As Superintendent Myers said, we don't have a problem now. We want to keep it that way. We're making a lot of good progress in Ferndale Schools. We want to continue to work with the city on, on all fronts, and I think our, our police department and city do have their priorities in order. And so, I just want to support the views of the superintendent and ask you to vote no on this and send it to the voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council on this issue? Yes, step right up, sir.
Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor, my name is Tim Beck. I'm chairman of the Coalition for a Safer Michigan. Actually, we're an umbrella group that assisted Andrew Sissel in getting all the legal requirements put together in order to get this on the ballot. We have won 100%. Every time this measure has made the ballot, it's won. And I respectfully disagree with my colleague. Who is responsible for getting us on the ballot? He got all the signatures. It's his baby, okay? I don't think the law is vague at all. Private property is private property. Look it up in Black's Law Dictionary. Now, Mr. Lennon, I do remember you from 2004, and you predicted disaster for the city of Ferndale, that medical marijuana. Medical marijuana pa, please.
You don't address any particular member, just.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, my mistake. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. But disaster was predicted in 2004 if medical marijuana were to pass in Ferndale. It meant that the city would, you know, go to heck in a handbasket, okay? Didn't happen. It's not gonna happen this time. And I also wanted to address another issue that came up, and that is, you are in charge. You have the power of the purse. You are the elected officials, and no employee of your city, whether they be dog catcher or sanitation expert or a member of law enforcement, can tell you how to spend the money. You have the right to set priorities in this city, no matter what they may be. And I'm just suggesting, give some consideration just passing this into law this evening. If not, it's okay. It's gonna pass anyway. But, you know, that's all I have to say. I'm not trying to be smart or whatever. I mean, it just is what it is. That's all I can say. Thank you so much for your time. I'm sorry, Mr. Lennon, I didn't mean nothing by that.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mayor Coulter and council members. My name is Margaret Ferenger. I'm the executive director of the Alliance of Coalitions for Healthy Communities, and my organization is responsible for publishing this report, but I think everyone here has seen. I am a prevention and public health specialist who has been working in Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb Counties, and I'm currently the director of your countywide prevention coalition. Southeast Oakland, your local community coalition, is one of our members. I'm closely involved in measuring public health trends and the impact of those trends, and I work with a professional evaluator to do so. There are two things that I can speak to you about with some level of expertise, and they pertain specifically to Oakland County. Number one that's important for you to know, I think, right now, is that youth marijuana use is on the rise. It is increasing, and this is a measurable trend in Oakland County. The second would be that we are actually seeing now, and it's represented in this report, that for 12th graders, youth marijuana use within the previous 30 days is coming up at a rate that's actually higher than the national average. And that's significant for a couple of reasons, and one is that Oakland County is an incredibly healthy county overall. You know, you look at any kind of health indicator for youth or for adults, you're gonna see that in most cases Oakland County is going to appear better than the national average in those areas. So, when you see an area that's an exception, it stands out that there's something else going on. And we do see that since 2008, that that has become the case now with 12th graders and some of the lower grades, it's still less, but we have more marijuana use by youth right now in Oakland County than what you see as a national average. There's significant research, I know, has been provided to you about the impacts of youth marijuana use. It's not safe for youth, and so I appreciate you taking attention to the impacts on youth as you make a decision. I think that when you do consider that information, it's gonna be quite evident that this should not be a decision that's made hastily. I have heard some very reasonable concerns related to drug policy, and I guess what I would say to address those, because policy work is something else that I do for a living, there are better, smarter, more effective ways to address policy concerns than the type of ordinance that's been proposed here in Ferndale. And I would encourage people who are interested to look into that, and we would certainly support those kinds of efforts. So, I would, in addition, like to just provide to you this letter that I received in my office. this afternoon. It's a statement from the Oakland County Health Division that provides some additional data related to rates of youth use and the harms of youth use that has been gathered by the Health Division, and also states in part that the Health Division strongly supports the position taken by your local Southeast Oakland Community Coalition, and that we are interested in maintaining measures that will promote the public health.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Anyone else from the public that would like to address council on this issue this evening? All right, if not, I will close the public comment portion of this, and we'll move to the council deliberation. So in the pack, in your packet, you all, the council should have received, and it was also available online, a memo from our attorney. I just asked our city attorney if he would write a brief memo describing what our options were and what his opinion was on our role this evening. And so, Dan, maybe you could just sort of give us an overview of that memo. I know everyone read it diligently, but we're not all lawyers, so maybe you could just explain briefly your memo.
Certainly, Your Honor. As Cheryl indicated, from a procedural standpoint this evening, council has a decision to make as to whether or not it wishes to approve the ordinance as submitted. The suggestion by one of the members of the audience that there could be alterations or better definitions is not an option for council. The charter language is clear that its decision, as it relates to the drafted initiative petition, is to pass that ordinance without alteration. And to the extent that council declines that action, the charter provision is also clear as to the next step, and the next step would be, given the timeframes of the submittal, that it would be presented to the voters of the city of Ferndale at the November election. So that's the procedural standpoint. I did, in my communication, provide a little bit of background. This is not the first occasion that the city of Ferndale has been faced with this issue. Most recently, in 2008, an initiative petition was filed that went to the voters and was approved as it related to medical marijuana. At that same November 2008 election, across the state, the Medical Marijuana Act was passed, and some of the language in that state act provided, language as it related to, any use inconsistent with that act was not allowed. So there certainly, as some of the members of the audience indicated, there's going to be issues associated with potential preemption issues at the state level and potentially at the federal level. But, you know, frankly, those issues really aren't for council's consideration this evening, except as it relates to whether it wishes to take action to approve the drafted ordinance submitted to you this evening or not. If you decide not to, it goes to the voters.
Thank you.
I have a, through the chair, may I have a question of clarification?
Okay.
So I'm a little confused. I heard the, Mr. Sissel, the leader of this ordinance, say tonight that the ordinance could be tightened up, that there was a little loose in terms of defining marijuana use on private property, which I have some more questions about that hopefully the police chief can answer. So if it's loose by the own author of this petition, there's no way to even revise the ordinance to tighten it up, because we only have two choices, right?
Through the chair, it's not an ordinance, it's a proposed ordinance, and this council does not have the discretion to tighten it up, to perhaps make a different model ordinance dealing with same subject matter this evening. It has the submitted initiative petition, which it is able to consider without alteration. So it can choose either to approve that submitted ordinance proposal, or it can decline to do that, in which case, if it's declined, it will go to the voters of the city in November.
Maybe before we have further debate, I know the chief had some issues, I think, around that issue with the definition of private and not, and Chief, do you just want to, before we start our debate, do you want to weigh in on your thoughts?
I'd be happy to, Your Honor. As you know, we discussed this at length with the city attorney and I over the language of the proposed ordinance. And the way it was written, it would, because of the word, some of the issues are the term transfer, which means sale throughout the first part of the definitions of the ordinance, Section 1279. Proposed Section 1282 would make it legal for anyone over 21 years of age to possess more than, or less than, one ounce of marijuana on private property, possess, use, or transfer. So it leaves the potential, because of the wording, for anybody on private property. I think maybe the intent was in your own home or in your own domicile, but it leads us that, there's hundreds of different scenarios that it could lead to, but it could be bars, it could be daycare centers, it could be anywhere that is private, you would be allowed to smoke or transfer marijuana on any type of private property. In essence, you could be in your backyard legally smoking marijuana where your five-year-old neighbor's playing next to you within feet, playing in a sandbox. I mean, it's just, it's poorly written in that, in that respect. It's also poorly written in the fact that it will allow for transfer. In essence, in theory, you could be at a local bar sitting outside, and you could be transferring and selling marijuana between, so long as it doesn't leave private property. You could, and you don't have more than an ounce of marijuana on you, you could have all sorts of sales going on right inside of a bar or a restaurant. It doesn't prevent that. So it was poorly written if the concept was to keep it on a domicile or in your own home. We did do a little bit of research in the city of Ferndale, and we've, anything that meets that criteria, that doesn't go outside of the home, in the last three years and seven months, we've never had an incident of an arrest of anybody in this city for 21 years of age or older with less than one ounce of marijuana in their own home. We have not arrested anybody or cited anybody for that offense. So it's not even an issue, and when you think about it, it makes perfect sense. I mean, the police department's not spending their time, nor are people calling the police saying, "My neighbor smoked marijuana in their house." I mean, it just doesn't happen. So we've, there's just no, this particular ordinance, as I'm assuming it was intended, doesn't even occur here. And we'll also say that, just for the gentleman back here that think that I'll be fired because we won't follow the city ordinance if it's passed, you have to understand that we, when we become police officers, we raise our hand and we take an oath to enforce all the laws, not just the ones in the city of Ferndale. So they can't tell me not to enforce the law. In fact, I'm obligated to do this.
Yes, they can.
No.
You know what, Chief Director, you know, your comments this way --
I'm sorry, Your Honor, but I just want to make sure that we're on the same page, that I have no choice but to enforce laws as the legislature writes them. So I have --
On your other point, though, I just want to get Dan's concurrence. So this issue of private property as it's written, would that, in your view also, would that include bars and --
As long as those are privately owned, yes.
As long as they're privately owned.
The word is private property, which it doesn't say not open to the public. I mean, it just says private property, which would include property that's owned by an individual, whether he makes that available or open to others or not. Whether that's the intent or not, I don't know, but the word is private property, and that's broader than somebody's residence.
Mike, to the chief. To the chief, but you could still force at the state level.
Yes.
Correct. So you can charge them regardless. If we decriminalize that, you can still recharge them. It's under state law. Solvency needs to do something eventually, but right now --
Well, actually, in my opinion, that's where this belongs, is in Lansing.
It does belong in Lansing. I agree. But try to get them to agree on something upstairs.
Anything else, Chief?
I would like to, I do concur with some of the folks that have spoken here in regards to our youth. I really think that's where this belongs. I mean, what you're doing at your house in the middle of the night, although that's really not my business, but it does impact on our youth, and I think that the folks from the school made some very valid points. I also, in the press, there's been several things that have been stated about our time being spent better on other things, and there have been many correlations made to alcohol, and that it is the same or should be treated the same as alcohol. And I'd like to make sure everybody here at the council knows that my officers spend an unbelievable amount of time dealing with alcohol-related offenses or issues, not only possession, you know, underage possession from driving or any of the other, you know, just the regulatory things. There is a huge measurable amount of time that we spend on alcohol, so I think that's somewhat of an unfair comparison. And I think my major thing that I have, that I, what I really want to make sure is that we, is that if this does pass, is that we are opening ourselves up for the possibility of some confusion, of people think that they are going to come here and transfer, use, and possess marijuana on private property in the open. And that's what we're really trying to prevent here, is that that is, that really doesn't belong, in my opinion, in our community here.
Thanks, Chief.
May I ask a question to the chair and the chief?
Of course, yeah.
Plain devil's advocate in the discussion, and I have no question about your role and job to enforce the laws of the land at the level as they may be, but there's only talk about the impact on the youth. And I know, no one here or anywhere is advocating that we provide, you know, or encourage marijuana in minors. I mean, I think that's a horrible thing. The evidence is clear, it shouldn't happen. Is marijuana a greater influence factor when the youth see a use of alcohol or tobacco, for example? Is marijuana any greater danger than other substances that are already legal, and the influence of youth of what they see?
I will answer that because I have an opinion on it.
Well, you brought it up, so I wanted to ask.
But my opinion is that, is that we, as adults, I think what we do, our children will emulate. I believe that what we set forth for our kids, they're going to see, they say, "Okay, it's okay to..." I mean, our whole society likes to drink and have a drink, and we advertise that, and we're telling our kids that as, once you get older, that's okay. And I don't know that we need another one of those issues with our kids. I think that we've already got one, and adding another one, I don't think is the right way to go. We've had, I think you'll see that as time goes on, if that answers your question, I think that we, if you smoke in front of your children, I think you are going to tell your kids that at some point in time, it's not that big of a deal. If you drink in front of your kids, it does the same thing, and if you're going to smoke marijuana in front of your children, I think later on, that's exactly what they will do. So I think you're just promoting that type of a lifestyle.
All right, council. Questions, comments?
Well, compelling arguments on both sides, but I think I know why this ordinance was written, you know, and it was intended for home use, I'm sure, but it just needs so much tweaking. It's terrible. I'm not one to pass it here at the table. If it does, so be it. It won't be a disaster. The disaster is Hurricane Katrina. I don't believe I used those words last time, but nevertheless, with that being said, I would like to send it to the voters myself, Your Honor.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone, any other comments or questions?
Sure. I was very supportive of medical marijuana. I voted for it locally and statewide before I was on city council, and then worked really hard with city council to make sure that, once medical marijuana was instated, that we provided some zoning regulations in order to guide where those new businesses could go. And I know the city spent a lot of money, significant legal dollars, to figure out the legal parameters of that and navigate the new law, which was also unclear, and I think all advocates on both sides thought the law was a little loosey-goosey as well, and still is. So, you know, I have always leaned towards decriminalizing marijuana. However, I think these efforts to rewrite the city ordinances as written is unclear and needs more thoughtful debate, thoughtful stance, as one of our residents has said tonight. So, and I also, I mean, it would just be, if we decriminalize it, we're not really, because state and federal law trump local law, and we would be sending a signal that if you came here and had less than an ounce and were approached by the police department, that you would not get a ticket or a fine or get in trouble with the law. So I'm also in support of sending it to the voters. It's clear that this is, even though the voters support medical marijuana, I think there is some questions and debate that the residents would be really willing to hear about what decriminalization really means in terms of operation with your public safety and what happens with, what happens on public, private property, I'm sorry, private property. And I think the voice of the person who wrote this ordinance and led the petition said it needed loosening or tightening up, and so I think that's indicative of where this ordinance lies right now.
Thank you. Council McGalloway.
I would agree with some of the comments of the supporters of this ordinance in the sense that decriminalization of marijuana isn't anything new. It was in the 1976 Democratic platform, and, you know, didn't go anywhere then, and then things happened in 80, and the whole, you know, the whole society changed. But, you know, one of my concerns is that this really appears to be a solution looking for a problem, as the chief indicated. People don't get charged with possessing one ounce of marijuana in their basement or at their house, and as I've sat up here, we spent a huge amount of time debating front yard setbacks and how we're going to determine those and where, you know, different things in the zoning map should be placed. And if, this is the will of the people to do this, you know, there should be a thoughtful approach to how the ordinance is drafted, how it's implemented, and, you know, I think what's telling to me is that no one ever approached any of the elected officials up here that I'm aware of advocating that some sort of change to our law be, you know, looked at or rewritten. This, because I don't perceive a problem with people being arrested unfairly or in some sort of oppressive manner, this ordinance is intended to send a message, to be a statement, and in the way it's drafted, I think it can have some unintended consequences that are going to be negative for the community. Perhaps the sky's not going to fall down, but given how much concern and how much expertise we have on the plan commission, on the ordinance committee, on the zone, you know, on the, you know, in the staff, I just think there's a better way to look at this in a more thoughtful way that can protect the interests of the community better. So I'm not going to support it this evening.
All right. You or me, Dan?
It doesn't matter. I'll go. You know, I've struggled with this a great deal. I have tremendous amount of respect for the police department, and the amount of work that the police department does, and as well as have concerns over the effects of youth, and I think much of that is very well-stated there. I think, as I understand it from everybody, this ordinance is virtually unenforceable. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes?
Well, I mean, ultimately, the court would decide that issue, but even if you look at the language of the Medical Marijuana Act, it has a statement that use inconsistent with that act is not allowed.
I think what this ordinance does do, because the die is cast, and this goes from here, if we vote it down tonight, to a vote of the people, and I also believe I was elected to represent the people, and I know that that represents a broad array of folks in the community, but I do tend to favor decriminalization, and I think this ordinance at least sends a message, joining other cities that have done so through valid initiatives, that says as a state and as a country, we need to look at our drug policies and our drug laws. So I'll be voting yes.
So a couple, first, for me, Dan, a couple of comments or maybe questions about your memo, because you started out by talking about the medical marijuana issue that Ferndale, and the ordinance that Ferndale enacted, and you said that, I think if I'm reading this right, that that was allowed because the act expressly provided that the medical use of marijuana is allowed under state law, to the extent that it's carried out according to the --
Yeah, it actually provided affirmative defenses to --
And if I'm reading your memo correctly, the difference with this ordinance is that state law preempt -- state law preempts municipal ordinances where the ordinance conflicts with the state statute, essentially. I mean, that's the...
Yes, in a couple of cases...
Just the why you say you're unenforceable.
Yes, in a couple of cases, if there's an express indication at the state level that it wishes to occupy that area of regulation to the exclusion of local ordinances, or if it, see, so there's a number of tests as it relates to preemption, but in the Medical Marijuana Act, there's a specific statement that says use by a person in a manner inconsistent with the act is, you know, shall not be allowed, and I'm paraphrasing that, but, but that's essentially what it says. So that's express indication that, that the NMMA wishes to occupy that area, and ordinances inconsistent with that would be deemed preempted.
And in your opinion, the state statutory scheme as enacted preempts the local ordinance initiative by occupying the field of regulation? That's what your memo said.
Correct.
So, I'm not a lawyer, that's a lot of, that's a lot of good words there, but if I understand you correct, it is that essentially, and I know lawyers don't want to talk this way, but the city of Ferndale doesn't have the authority to draft drug laws that are in conflict with the state drug laws, which are where drug laws in, in the state are drafted at the state level, is that...
As it relates to marijuana...
As it relates to marijuana, okay.
As it relates to marijuana, by virtue of the language in the medical, Michigan Medical Marijuana Act.
Which is why I guess you agreed with Dan that this is an unenforceable, virtually unenforceable law by the, the city of Ferndale and its, and its law enforcement, because state law...
Yes, if challenged.
And federal law, for that matter, and federal law, but state law in particular, but in federal law, would, would preempt our ability to pass a local ordinance.
Yes, more clearly as it relates to state, the federal issue, there's a different test as it relates to preemption, and, and there's a case on that right now that is being deliberated by the Michigan Supreme Court. It's my opinion that it's likely, well, you know, the Supreme Court has not rendered its decision on that issue as it relates to federal preemption of a local ordinance on medical marijuana.
Okay. And, and I was interested to hear that Andrew talked about the, the need to tighten this up. I've also heard supporters say that they basically agreed that it was sending a message, that it was an advisory kind of thing, that they understood that, that it wasn't going to be, that, that the local community is not going to be able to preempt state and federal drug laws, but it sends a message, and I get that, because Ferndale has a history of activism, and we like to send messages here, and we're a very progressive community, and we are not shy about sending messages, and I think that's totally appropriate. However, we, we don't always send our messages through passing laws. We can pass resolutions, we can march on Lansing, we can do all sorts, there's a lot of ways to send messages. But we're specifically asking to send a message by enacting a law, and I am uncomfortable with that, because I took a similar oath to the, the Chief, and I swore to uphold the laws of the state of Michigan and the city of Ferndale, and I don't know how I can have sworn to that, to uphold the laws of the state of Michigan and then pass an ordinance or a local law that conflicts with that. I think, I guess I agree with the Chief, that this is a, this is an issue for Lansing. This is an issue for law, for lawmakers to, to enact. That, I, I guess that's where I do come down, and I worry, because send a message to who? So send a message to Lansing, okay, and, and Ferndale can do that, Council can do that, or we can do that in November and send a message to Lansing. I don't particularly like the message that it sends to our police department, because their job is to enforce the laws, and I think it's terrible public policy to put your police department in the position of picking which laws they're going to enforce, which ones they're going to turn away and not enforce. And I think that both sides have raised good issues, but the, the people that believe that marijuana should be decriminalized should be up in Lansing, trying to persuade the legislature that that's what they should do. And Andrew, I give you a lot of credit, because he's running for the legislature next year, and I guess that's probably one of the things he'll take up there, and I believe that is the appropriate place for that discussion. So my ultimate concern about passing this, I'm sorry I'm being as long-winded as the lawyers now, is, is that we're going to send a message, potentially, to the residents of this community, that either, even if we adopt it, or if it passes in November, that marijuana is decriminalized in Ferndale. And I don't believe it will be, I don't believe that our police can enforce anything but the laws that are written on the books, and so I'm concerned that we give a confusing message to people that we've somehow decriminalized marijuana in Ferndale when we don't have the ability to do so. So I think it's a fair question for the voters in November to send the message if they want, but I don't think it's appropriate for Council to enact an ordinance that we know is in conflict with state law and could potentially confuse our residents. So I'm going to vote no.
If I can just respond to a couple of things, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate everything you've said, and, I mean, I understand arguments on both sides, I truly do, but two things, one, I don't feel it's a violation of my oath to, to uphold this. I think there's a significant number of registered voters in the city that sent this petition to us that has allows us and asked us to look at this and consider this. I mean, therefore, by reacting to the requests from the residents, it, I don't think we're out of place in considering this. Is it the perfect tool to send a message necessarily to the state, or, or our views that perhaps what drug policy should be reviewed? No, we could have done it by resolution or anything else, but this is the vehicle to which it was presented to us on, and so we need to respond to it.
Fair enough.
And I, like I said, completely respect your opinion on...
Of course.
I guess the other message that it sends is to the kids in our community, and what might be right for, you know, a thirty-year-old man to do for medical reasons, may not be appropriate for a fourteen-year-old, who's, you know, getting started in, at, at high school or what have you. So, I mean, it sends all sorts of messages on different levels. I hear, you know, the folks who interact with the children in our community, and whether, if voters approve this, that's one thing, but I think as a community leader, we have some responsibility to the youth and to the institutions that serve them to, you know, set an example, to, to send a good, healthy message. And I don't think it's healthy to tell kids to smoke cigarettes, and I don't think it's healthy to tell kids to use alcohol, even if those are things that perhaps, you know, those of us up here do. So, you know, perhaps it's hypocritical, but I, I think we're called to a little bit higher standard up here.
Well, I agree with Councilman Galloway, and I, I do believe it sends mixed messages to a lot of organizations, the police department, the Mr. Meyer and the school board, the schools, the Southeast Oakland Coalition, that work real hard to combat some of these issues, and I, I think it just gives out mixed signals. And I hope people take the time, as this does go to the voters, to read the ordinance as presented, because it needs some work.
One more time, and then I promise, I think we can, we can vote on it, because I want to clarify, I'm not at all advocating for the youth to engage in the use of marijuana, alcohol, cigarettes, or anything else. And I think more so, the message also sends, you know, when we talk about messages, is that we can express an opinion that if there is a law or a state, you know, regulation that we don't agree with, however that may go, we have the right and we have bodies that can help do this. And I think that, again, I don't think anyone under the age of twenty-one should have access to this, and I'm not suggesting we, we do that, and my support in that is no way to send a message to the youth that it's okay, because there's a lot of things as a youth you just shouldn't do, and that's not what this addresses, in my opinion.
I also, one last comment, and I, I'm of the same opinion as Dan as well, and I think the advocates for this ordinance also feel that way, that's why they put the twenty-one year level in there, but I think we're seeing a national conversation change about the federal drug policy, and it affects everybody at every level of government, and in your communities and neighborhood, and I think that's a really good conversation we need to be having now, because the result of our policy currently at the higher level is we have really jam-packed prisons, we're spending a lot of money, more money on prisons than we are on school and education, and I think that's a policy that we need to be working on nationally. And so I, I guess, I guess the, the larger, bigger picture, the macro here, is that things are shifting. I understand why they came to Ferndale and are trying to make a, a statement, but going back to my position, is the way that it's written, I think the community, residents, voters need to dive deeper into what the ordinance means and how it will be operationalized locally from your public safety officers, and how the state and federal government will treat you, because how we treat you locally may not be, is obviously not going to be the same way the feds and state will treat you.
And, and you know, for me on that point about the larger trend, I mean, there, there are sixteen states that have now decriminalized marijuana. I think that number's going to grow. I would be surprised if by the time I retire, that number isn't double, because I do think there's a, a national trend and a tolerance for marijuana that's, that's probably, that's appropriate. But it's done at the state level. It's a state issue, and it's a state issue, I think, for a very good reason. A lot of people have compared it to alcohol, and I think it, those comparisons are also have some validity, and our, our state, alcohol laws are done at the state level. You wouldn't want different drinking ages in different cities, and different, you know, blood alcohol levels allowed in different cities. Those kinds of issues, I think, belong at the state level. I think that's where it's appropriate to debate them. Otherwise, you have a patchwork of communities where sometimes it's legal, sometimes it's decriminalized, sometimes it's, it's, it's illegal. It's, it's what Lansing is for, it's what lawmakers in Lansing are paid to do. And I agree, the Lansing, the Lansing legislature right now is not particularly friendly to this issue, but change the legislature. Going out and changing the drug laws on the local level, and I understand a number of cities have done it, but guess what? Just because Detroit passed this ordinance and Flint passed this ordinance, the drug laws in Michigan have not changed, and they won't change if Ferndale passes this ordinance either. So the debate is appropriate debate in Lansing, I believe.
And Ann Arbor, you know, they also passed it.
I, I, I'm not trying to be all-inclusive of all the cities that have passed it, I'm saying all of their efforts have not changed the drug laws in Michigan, because the only way you can do that, in my view, if I'm reading the, the legal opinion right, is to do that in a way where it's appropriate, so...
Well, I, my, one last comment, if I may. I think the city could be, could look at reducing the, reducing the infraction from a misdemeanor to a civil infraction. So I think that's what the other cities have done, so I believe we have a thousand-dollar, I may be wrong, but we have a very high fine for, for that type of infraction, so that's some, that could be a middle step approach if this, if voters choose to vote this down, if this goes to the ballot, which signals here that it is. So that is just a suggestion that we could consider. I believe that's what Ann Arbor did, too.
I do believe that's how Ann Arbor addressed this issue, is lowering the fines, not, I believe, not decriminalizing marijuana, but lowering the fines, I believe, is the option that they chose. Any further discussion of Council? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
I don't believe there's a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's absolutely right.
I move that we adopt the ordinance, adding section twelve dash eighty-two to the Ferndale Court of Ordinances, chapter two, article three, as petition by Andrew Sisso, without alteration.
Is there support? Is there support? That motion fails for lack of support. Do we need to make an affirmative vote, or does that concede the issue?
You do not, Your Honor.
All right. Very good, thank you. That item is not adopted. Moving on into the agenda, agenda item seven A, which is related to item seven B, but Dan, do you want to introduce item seven A for us, please?
Certainly, Your Honor. Council passed back in two thousand and seven, a resolution as it relates to the consideration by this body, by Council, of new liquor licenses, inter-county transfer of liquor licenses, and also downtown development, redevelopment licenses. A, an application was submitted and reviewed consistent with that resolution back in December, and as a result of that meeting, the review committee considered whether or not there should be certain modifications to Council's resolution as it relates to how it considered those types of requests. And before you this evening is a proposed resolution, which would provide that any type of transfer of a Class C license, a inter-county transfer of a Class C license, or downtown development, redevelopment license, would need to be subject to the review criteria that currently city, that, that the city applies to a Class C establishment. And there is also, for your consideration, a proposed ordinance that would adopt as part of a regulatory ordinance, the requirement that those types of transfers be subject to review. The issues for review are largely consistent with the, the previous resolution, that it would require a, a submittal of a plan of operation. It would, as proposed, not apply to an applicant who just wishes to transfer the ownership of the licensed establishment without moving the location. So if there's a change in ownership, and, but the, the proposed establishment is staying right there and is planning on continuing to operate in, in the same manner, this resolution and the ordinance would not apply to that. There is, one of the other features of this proposed resolution is that the requirement that alcohol sales not exceed fifty percent, Council would have the discretion in the case of a establishment that had a square footage of less than five thousand square feet. That particular figure was recommended by the community economic director after considering the current mix of licensed establishments in the community. So if there's any other specific proposals as it relates to either the resolution or the ordinance, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
And Councilman Galloway, you've been involved in helping to revise this, and I know you, you raised some issues last time. Is there anything you want to add to that, just in terms of introduction of this before we have a discussion?
We had two, maybe three, rather lengthy meetings where we went around and around on how best to address concerns with, you know, potential issues, or I guess you might characterize them as loopholes in the ordinance that would allow uses that would be detrimental to our downtown, such as, you know, uses that would only be open once or twice a week, that would take up perhaps large spaces, that would really negatively impact the downtown and the good mix of street traffic and, and businesses that we have. So I think this addresses those concerns while protecting those businesses and those types of businesses that are smaller in size, you know, and allows them to exist, those things like Soho's or Danny's that, you know, make a, a city like Ferndale unique. So I think this is a good mix, it, it doesn't carve out two different standards, and I think it's a good solution.
All right. Actually, before we can have just any further discussion, a motion would be in order.
I move that we adopt ordinance number one one four eight, amending chapter three, alcoholic beverages, article two, vendors for consumptions on premises, section three dash seventeen of Ferndale Code Ordinances.
I support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Piana. All right, discussion, questions, comments on this item?
May I ask, there were several issues raised by the DDA Business Development Committee in this, were they all addressed?
Christina, do you know if the, the issues that were raised by the DDA Development Committee were addressed?
The commit, excuse me, the committee had only met, like, this past Wednesday to review it, so we really didn't have much time to kind of, kind of, I think, flush through some of those questions, so regarding the square footages, I know that Derek Delacorte had referenced a number of establishments and their square footages. They ran probably at the highest level somewhere around thirty-five, thirty-six hundred square feet, from my recollection, and that was one of the elements that the Business Development Committee questioned in terms of how high of a square footage to allow for that potential for waiver, knowing the, the waiver would be that where you would allow for something less than fifty percent food sales. The, I don't think that they really responded back whether or not that still was yet too high, they just haven't had enough time to be able to say that. Myself personally looking at that, it's not extraordinarily higher than, say, a thirty-five-hundred square foot space, but it is fifteen-hundred square feet more. Comparably, you would be looking, if you're looking down the street, Buffalo Wild Wings is around seven thousand square feet, so a five-thousand-square-foot establishment will be somewhere between a Sneakers and Buffalo Wild Wings in terms of square footage, so, or that potentially could be maybe... So, or that potentially could be maybe almost half of, say, Dollar Castle's old space, if you're looking at visuals. The other two items, I think there were more, more of a question as to preference was whether the written plan for vehicular movement was whether it was still needed or not. Because we were removing parking plan as part of it, it was just a secondary thought that the committee had after looking at that element. And then the final one was really in respects to whether, at the state level, the inter-county, so county to county transfers, if that has been approved to proceed at the state level, and if so, if that language needs to be included in this. And I just didn't hear back on that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Comments of council?
Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmembers, Piana?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Next item is consideration of a resolution regarding approval of a new and transfers on on-premises licenses dated August 12, 2013. Dan, do you want to, you want to briefly tell us why that was different than the first one?
Yeah. One is the ordinance that is enforceable against the communities and would have the establishments if there was a deviation or potential violation of the plan of operations submitted to council. The resolution really is the, sets forth the criteria that the review committee is going to apply to an applicant regarding one of these types of transfers. So in light of the approval of the ordinance, it's my recommendation you approve the resolution.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
So I would move that we adopt the resolution as presented. Is that sufficient?
All right.
Moved by Martin?
Support.
Supported by Piana. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers, Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is also adopted. Now, moving on to call to council. Police Chief Collins, anything further for the go-to the community?
Nothing further, Lieutenant.
All right. Joe, anything for Parks and Rec this evening? Recreation Department, I should say.
Good evening. Just one quick announcement. The Parks Commission is still seeking feedback on our parks now through the end of August. Folks, invite folks to check out the survey on our city website, ferndalemi.gov. Also have signs posted in each park with a QR code. So if you have a smartphone, you're able to scan the code and fill it out right then and there. Like I said, we'll be asking for feedback now through the end of this month. Thank you.
Thanks. And I want to thank DPW for making the signs in the, in the parks. When you go to a park now, there's a barcode there. You can take your smartphone. The survey will pop right up on there and you can take it right there. And as a result, we've had quite an increase in people taking the survey, over 250 people so far. So great response so far. But we have, you have until the end of the month, right, Joe?
Yeah.
All right. Derek Delacorte, anything from community development this evening?
Nothing additional, Your Honor.
All right. Jenny, anything from HR this evening?
Nothing.
Thank you. Looking around to make sure I don't miss anyone. Chief, can't miss you. Fire Chief, anything from the fire department this evening?
Nothing.
All right. Joe, anything from, what is your department called?
Whatever you do.
We still don't know what he does. Chief?
General support, sir.
All right. Well, you've taken on so many projects. I'll just give you an opportunity if there's anything. Boyd, anything else from DPW this evening?
Nothing else, Your Honor.
Thank you. Cheryl Lynn, anything else from the clerk's office?
Very quickly, the deadline to submit nominating petitions to run for mayor or council is tomorrow at 4:00 PM.
Thank you very much. City manager, we have not heard a word from you yet this evening, which is sort of amazing. Anything to share with us this evening?
No, I'm good.
All right. Dan Chris, anything else from the legal-
Nothing else, Your Honor.
All right. Councilman Martin?
No, the only thing I want to add, not to beat a dead horse, but back to Agenda Item 7C, I really appreciate, not only everybody who came out, but my colleagues in the council, that we have the kind of council we can have, robust debate, and it's productive and healthy. So even when we disagree, I do appreciate the ability to do that. So, thank you.
Indeed. Councilman Lennon?
Enjoy the cruise. Be safe. I have nothing else. Right, Chief?
Yes. No drinking and driving, or anything else.
Or anything else?
No drinking and driving, or anything else, she said, if you didn't hear that at home. Mayor Protem, Piana, anything that you would like to-
No, not tonight. Enjoy the rest of the summer, what's left.
Councilman Galloway?
Nothing this evening.
All right. Nothing else from the mayor either. So with that, our meeting is adjourned.